Then they're sin of the all. Any of the things that have been posted for our public hearing. There obviously is nobody here tonight present. Johnny, do you see anybody on there for? Zooming in?
No.
Okay. All stuck in traffic. Very well, well, we will. Move on with some discussion items and close their public hearing. And several, I will, we'll talk about some of these things on public hearing, answering questions that. And not a lot have. Johnny, if you need to go over, I can just shut it off when we're through. Yeah. Very good, thank you. See you tomorrow.
I'm actually.
Well, that's right, I remember now that you're. You're far over here, yes.
I may have to take care of an issue, so.
Okay. Very good. I already sent you all an email and. Directing you to the. Website where these. Items are. Public there were posted. Do you? Do you have any questions about any of them? Most of them have to do with changing our city ordinances and tweaking them all here and there. Were there any that? Sit out to you that you might not have understood or want some further? Explanation about?
Here we want. I'm gonna talk about temporary housing.
Okay.
As ten eighty two. We're basically taking out that entire.
Yes.
Area or whatever.
That's a result of the state thing they have done.
They think that we have to move it back, I mean, I know why we're doing it. Then if we go back to the structured owner two hundred square feet. Looking at. It talks about temporary occupancy and things like that. There's a trend going around right now. That's in the asking. With tiny houses. A lot of people, they're stuck when in their backyard.
Yeah, it was shovel.
We haven't seen anything like that, I don't think, come across the cities. Play, but I don't think that we ought to have that on our radar. And this kind of talks about how those folks are staying used to that.
That's right.
We turn about the same size.
To meet a criteria for an ADU accessory dwelling. It has to be either in the primary residence. Or it can be in a garage as long as a garage has a common wall. In the primary residence. Because it can't be a detached garage, it has to be a. It can't be attached, and that's why you'd find that tiny house that have a detached. Facility and our ordinances don't allow that at this time. And they don't allow accessory buildings, which don't fit that criteria to be a dwelling. That's not accessory buildings. Accessory buildings to be dwelling places. So if somebody wants to build a storage shed in their backyard, big as it might be, they can't convert that to a dwelling. According to our ordinances. So the state keeps. Mandating this, mandating that, and you know, there's, there's a desire to have additional. All the uniformed housing. So I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be surprised. The detect that the attached garage part just came into play this year. Used to be, you couldn't do it in a garage. But now they're saying as long as there's a common wall, you can, a person, a person can make that.
Into a little accessory dwelling.
Yeah. So we're.
I really think we ought to. We want to know or be aware of that's gonna happen.
Yeah. So how do we?
That didn't necessarily, they're self-contained. They're self-contained, they're. I've actually been, we're working on a ranch. And we're actually building some of these. And so.
For buckhouses or?
Yeah. For right now, but. They're neat and they're still, we're gonna see that happen. I don't have thirty tanks in there with her to build them. And stuffing them all over homes.
The backyards, side yard.
They're creating more houses.
It's actually back there. See, and another thing, our zoning doesn't permit that because it's seable. Hasn't worked. They can't have two living structures on the same lot.
Right. What's happening in every city? Cause I know these go the same way that they don't have, there are ordinances that you can't have a separate dwelling on. A lot, most of their lots are theirs to have most.
Yeah.
And, and yeah, and there's still stuff in their backyards.
One, one thing that's protecting us a little bit here too. Is you pay five, four, five, six plus hundred thousand for a lot. Probably not gonna put a tiny house on it.
There, there's a possibility.
Somebody has a need, a family member, a family say, yeah, there's lots. So cause the price of lots are keeping that in check.
I think there's a lot of recent odds, but there are more reasons.
Yeah, just a short-term rental that now that's out the door and you can have short-term rental on a thirty days in your, in your home. But I think that. I think we'll see the, the time will come.
Yeah, it is.
Stay ahead of it. Yeah, yeah. Right now, they're still. People still want less dense housing. And they probably are all, all.
They will all try to help that we, hours of being are strongly pushing.
Yeah.
I mean, the state.
I think, I think in this area, they do up last tent houses, no question about it.
That's what happened.
We're seeing that all soon, please.
You know, with their, it's been losing. The developments that they want over there, people said, no, up in arms about it. Everything, so. Let's change things, so people are still, many years ago, uh, never years ago. There's a subdivision that got approved called Bellview subdivision. They wanted to collect some dense housing in there. And I'm talking about fifteen units and the people over there have. Up arms over it. So city said, no, and they gave them. Eight, eight, oh, eight lots in the subdivision. So. This, I mean, you know, that's a city's choice and they voted to make some compromise there with that, but. More and more, there's pressure to. Well, it's affordability. It is affordable, this, this day, you know, we have our own challenges in the state, hell, twitchy everywhere, across the country's near, it's just, it's expensive. Yeah, it doesn't matter where, it's expensive.
Yeah, we're all, I mean, I'm for more spread out, for sure, it's, I don't love high density here, that means however. Like it's.
Affordable.
Now, I see a lot of communities, we talked about that in the Home Builders Association meeting last month. That some communities are allowing this, what they call high-density housing. Uh, and, and they're doing it under the auspices of using less natural resources, like less water, they're building homes. On extreme small lots with no yard, no lot, it's, it's just.
So it's getting, you know, it must keep it.
And I mean, you're talking about a lot of sizes of six thousand square feet, I mean.
Yeah, we don't know what's going on, they say now, there's some of that, you know?
And I think there's, there's separate units, but we're not.
A test, it's very small.
We have only, only. Ten feet between.
Probably five, five on the setbacks.
So in, in, and a lot of cities. That have because of their population, that's one thing that is protecting us here, it's our, our low. Population. Because it, it doesn't kick into effect until, and I don't remember what the numbers were. But some of these cities, communities are being required. By the state or by their county. To have these high-density homes affordable. For these young families, which I, I think is sad because. As a child growing up, I mean. That's, that's a lot of space. Yes, so anyway, that's, that was discussed in Home Builders Association as well.
So, yeah. Yet you see in Spanish Fork and Screenville, a few places around where they've put some of this identity housing. Things to accommodate state mandated requirements and. I don't see that blessing at all. In, in, in many respects, it's driving young couples out of the state, you know, because they can't afford. Five inches here, and there's still, there's, there's some states that can, I mean, it's unbelievable, the different areas of the country, different values, bill of state. Oh, yeah, I like to switch it. So I've got kids in Albuquerque, in St. Louis, wage.
Yeah, tough.
Yeah, yeah, Texas as well, you know. Yeah.
Yeah, you pay for the public taxes. Yeah, in these cases.
There's, well, there's probably public taxes all through the reason. Yeah, that's, all my main sense of getting it. So anyway, the, the point, something to keep. Keep an eye on things to see, photography up here helps eliminate first of all, high density. And you know, the things just because. It's not good, down flat bottom, maybe, but the rest of the city is just not good to see. Yeah, tiny homes, somebody could park, that's something else.
My law, they could park them, you know, I was thinking, I can still.
Be good, share them right there between you and the, impossible, yeah.
Did I miss the meeting?
Uh, no, well, there's part of it, yeah. What meeting did you want?
I was told there was a part two meeting about the development.
No, you're in the wrong place. That's what I'm saying, you're in state, you want to. Someone just had a statement station about, I forget where I came there and. They, they have a city council meeting tonight where they're going to be talking about that developer.
Yeah, that's why I'm here.
So sorry to disappoint you. We're talking about pouring with a.
Can you guys answer a question?
What's?
Why do they need access to Maple? Do they need access?
No.
So why is that?
It's cheaper for them.
It's efficient, how does that benefit us?
Doesn't. It's a facilitating thing for, for them as an hectare. Is unable, should there be a fire there?
Right.
Or called to where that part, it's not the AMX subdivision. So it's close to vote and votes to that part of the subdivision to come out onto Maple. My understanding, however, and it's gonna be presented tonight, is the developers decided to utilize Maple. And they're at this point in time, as they go forward.
That's a swirl on this part.
Yeah, and yet the, the flip side of that term is we do need an access through there for fires. Though I'm not sure. And we have.
Do, do we or?
But it's only a one-way street. Go out and somebody come in.
They, they. We like an emergency.
Yeah. When that thing was sold, yeah, when, when it was hatched into saving. There was an agreement between our city and, and H E Davis, who owned the property. And some of these, and it's a forever agreement, a part of that agreement was access in and out. Of that area for, to ask for a fire. So. That's actually. We go drive down and we sell fire, that's one of the more fire trade because the rejected needs. Um, make sure when you get, that's how I got the rest of my, my, my.
Wow.
What was that answer question?
That does answer my question, um. That was my only concern, I mean, I do have concerns about the water, but. People gonna sell their land and people are gonna do what they're gonna do, it's America, you know?
Yeah.
So hopefully they can just. Put some constraints around it to make it manageable.
Well, I know developers are trying, they're. They do what they can, not absolutely, but to work with the community and. And particularly the individuals and how the community feels about things. About, you know, community does always get their way, but developers will do what they can to accommodate things as long as. As long as it's.
Maybe we're thinking around about taking out the mailbox with a giant bridge a little bit.
But it's, uh, decided to resolve, so.
That's interesting. Where are they gonna go? How, isn't that our problem?
The mailboxes are, oh, there's a right-of-way through there. But some of the discussion is they may with no much new mailboxes somewhere.
Maybe.
Uh huh. But if they don't be there.
They also pay us a good amount like that.
Yeah, that'd be nice. So that's not. I can't say any good solutions, I've not made that decision.
Yeah, I'm good.
Well, at one time was Utah, the roads wanted to run the. Big road all across the foothills.
Well, eleven two hundred, they had. That road, and that which was going to go through the mailbox.
Right. But if you think, you watch that.
Well, there's still a right-of-way through there.
Yeah, there is right-of-way, they, they, they kind of put it on hold, it's my understanding. County may have, but I don't think Mary Myers made that decision yet with his department. So.
Well, I guess I'll head down to where the work started.
There were a lot of people when I was just down there caring about a half hour of this. Yeah. Um, she run, she's. Turn around, she goes over by Kerry. She goes like, she might. She might. We had that, you know, we had that. That was a different era. It was, it's, it's two years ago, we served, I, we were out in the brushroom with the center thing and he came out, stood high, phone was beat on that thing and started yelling all sorts. I mean, I see. I guess, and I was hoping the sheriff, yeah, he was there, because I was hoping he wasn't that big, because that's when I lived, rested. He come out, he was beaten on that, it's Mike Taylor and I in there, he slurred at us, telling us. All sorts of crap, we didn't have the right to drive around on Saturday sirens and using up city resources. I just, you know, remind, I just said. My just kidding, yeah, to say, house, don't call us. Oh, good, are there any other questions or thoughts in it with the other items that you can? Something else that. Included here was the work that Larry has done on the. Other facilities thing, he made some changes to our cold air to accommodate accessory dwelling. Accessory buildings.
Right.
They're probably preparing it, so. With facilities districts.
And again, there weren't really changes there, there were just some modifications that explained it and. Make more sense, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like, like, things have the. Equation of the. Maybe a little bit, right, that will disport. To the site plan and that, and it makes it so.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it's better.
Yeah, with fewer things that I hadn't written, or seen, what I went to. Went for something like twenty things that we require down to like fourteen or fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, reduced to about twenty-five percent.
Which will make the site plan somewhere less busy.
Yeah. There's another thing coming up. Um, now I wonder if I can make, just go into that. We kept, the state is also now mandating a new. Subdivision ordinance. That's taking a lot of the review process away from the city. To expedite, not expedite, but to more timely process subdivision ordinances. They're only allowing one public hearing now for, for a subdivision proposal. And. They're placing emphasis on the concept plan and going from that to the preliminary plan. And they're saying that the preliminary and final can be the same.
Uh, so just one step.
There's, yes, and they've.
Interesting with that. Yeah, I don't think so, just.
Yeah, they, they have sent aside about. Fourteen thousand dollars for each city. To take advantage of. Uh, attorney and, uh, ordinance writers to help them. Restructure their own ordinances. And if that costs the city anything, the state has set that money aside. And we have talked to. And then there's, there's two attorney firms, the whole state that could do that. And there's three planners that can help cities rewrite the ordinance, our attorneys can do that too. But they've been designated. Uh, to do that, no, no one else in the state can do that. So we've kind, our, our city attorneys are ones, are one of the two law firms that have been approved to do that. Because of their background in the real estate. Uh, industry and Jones Deville firm. Subfirm, sister firm has been approved to be one of the planners that can write. Help cities write their new ordinances, we've contacted them at their, as soon as, as soon as. They get the funding and everything, all that worked out and we'll be utilizing them. To help to write for new city ordinance to. Conform to the new state statute, like, and.
Yeah, so those are preliminary class, they're obviously gonna be a lot more detailed than they are initially.
They are.
I was, I was.
Well, it's become a final plan, it's gonna have to do everything.
Yeah, you have to have that clean, you know, that.
We, we've tried to do that with Summer Creek. So that it's easier for us instead of being skimpy on a preliminary plan. To include as much as we can on that and then realize that we need to tweak it a little bit to maybe through a final, right? Yeah. Well, that's what we did with, with Summer Creek. The developers can have that up again, try to get a final or two, a final.
Which is good, I know, like you, a lot of times we go in for preliminary, literally it's gone on an act.
Now. If it's a two or three lot thing, you know, but if it's a. A hundred new lots, I mean, we didn't, we, we. We kind of got our short handed to us on the final because it was lacking and we didn't realize it. So anyway, we've all, we've been saying, no, we're gonna do a second rate preliminary. It's a chance for you all that and then we're gonna find. Whatever, so. Anyway, that's, that's in the works, I wanted to show that, oh, there's a headline of. The end of next year for the, there's, there's quite a bit of time. To for the cities to work with these people, if they want to, city does, has all that, their own in-house people, then that's fine too, uh, for them to work with. Uh, if you haven't heard, last night the. Council approved Ted Nicholson to be the new, about five titles.
Yeah.
Buyer chief and all. And, and all, public superintendent, public, public works department head. There's one, something else, I can't figure what it was down. So Ted's. Will start officially on Monday, appearing to the city. This is his last week with him.
He's a good man. First, I'm glad that's mine for the city, and I got the fire department. Yeah, it's not. And if you look at Johnson, assistant fire chief.
Yeah, then, well, I have a training officer, and he, and this is. There you go, which will lead me into a conversation with you.
Yeah.
I was gonna wait till. We gave you, I, I just. Lady here, um, a little bit of update that we know on treehouse. The city has had, myself, myself, probably two or three others with the mayor. Have had some discussions with Larry Meyer about what he wanted to do. He, he. We knew that he was developing and our initial thrust in going to him. Was to discuss a possible commercial grocery store. And down here in the, in the valley, the valley. And he's made a couple of overtures to some businesses and so far they have not been interested in doing that. But it's still open and he's still. Seeing what might be able to be done by way of any kind of commercial development down there to assist us with our. With our taxes. And he, our salt shed in. It's on our property within the city of Salem.
Yeah.
And so he, he wants the salt shed property for their development and. And so he's willing to try to find another place working with us for, for salt shed.
So can I ask the question there, sure. Um. Or some of us that deal with the salt and plow being part of that. And as, as you guys talk about the salt shed, I think it'd be good to ask the input from the people that actually access it.
I, I agree, so I, I looked at a few places and Corbett was trying to instrument on that when he was here and I was, I think the city's. Picture, yeah, it was initially some thought.
There was, couple of us went and looked at it and it was uh. If you go down around, if you get that, there's a lot of salt in there and it's. It's bigger than you think.
Yeah, no, you're right.
That's supposed to be a way.
Go say again?
I can't remember how many times we've heard of the ed to that building.
Oh.
I mean, that's, that might be, look like a mountain, so.
Cause he packs it pretty full and then at some point this season when we end up bringing it some in. And last year we ended up bringing it in, salt two different deserts, yeah, it's the end year, just, just to.
So, that, that property was originally part of the Davis thing, how did it end up in Salem instead of?
I'm not sure, ten truth or if it was part of Davis or not. We.
City owns it.
City, yeah, it's just not in the city.
In the city, I mean.
Years ago, but all that got annexed, we lost it and went to Salem.
With the Davis.
The Davis problem.
Yeah. So. We'd be crazy not to see if we could get that in our. City riders, city developers, yeah.
Well. It's surrounded by the Meyer, that, oh my goodness. That property, so.
So is Meyer Development got property then between the Hyatts and those penalties there and there's land there.
Yeah.
Oh my goodness. Crazy, yeah, yeah.
He bought, he bought her Davis property.
Which is. Well, the good you're about with that is still, is the ponds and the water rights. I mean, that's. Most of the value to me.
Now, he said in, in his meeting that we went to the planning commission meeting in Salem a couple of weeks ago. That, that they own the property, they've paid it off. So.
So it's not under contract, it's actually a rest, no, they own it.
So that's a big, big thing for developers, they don't have to mortgage the property they've got to build and. Now, building is another thing, that's, you know, but if they, they build in phases and develop it in phases and. Uh, that works to their advantage in doing it that way, but the fact that they own all the property is a big, is a big plus. Uh, you're not worried about damage going. That's true. Not having money to, they take them a while to finish, and this is, they're looking at. Anyway, that's, that's uh, that's kind of what I was saying, we're still, we're, we're looking to have an open house in January with him. Coming here, anybody wants to come, questions asked and answered. Um, uh, but he's still working off of a concept plan. It had, had uh, and that's what hit the planning commission was, they changed zones. So, wasn't presenting a plan, but he's got a concept plan that he's working on, but it helped evolve from a preliminary plan, yeah. So, we're still, what's her name, his name is Larry, Larry is the young guy. I don't know a lot of the background about it, but you know, in Oregon, uh, on State Street. Those two big condos that they, they built and have this retail space and. And where they had problems with it.
Yeah, problems a while, then it got finished, yeah. They had, so they had problems for seventy years.
Yeah, wow, it's been that long?
Yeah.
You guys, it's lots of projects. Uh, it's a good breakfast restaurant in there. And it's manned by uh, it's complex. Uh, that he brings out a person.
I, I, I eat in a place, I don't know if it's breakfast only or.
It's a breakfast all day long, I'm trying to think, but it's kind of a funny name. Come to me right now. But uh, anyway, he's there, it's uh, kind of a help, helping guys around prison. It will, you know, head start and stuff. There's a, there's a restaurant in Salt Lake that, it's called, it was, it's called the Rams. And they, they, they've been there for early nineteen hundreds. They had this decor, it's just this beautiful lot of black and white tile and wood, booms and everything. He bought, the guy in the restaurant bought all of that from Rams and brought it down, brought it down here and that's, they use over there for their.
I think that's.
Yeah, the breakfast all day long, so, anyway, that's. He's, he's the main front guy, uh, but they've got other investors and things like that, they're part of that. One of that group, he's a good guy to want to talk to. So, we'll see, we're, we're, we're takes us, we're staffs, working on, on some things with. It was packed, but it was very, it was very minor, most of Woodland Hills residents were against. Most of them there were for Maple, and they were against the development using Maple Street and, and as it was expressed. But it was very, um, in fact, similar with the planning commissioners commented on, they appreciated. The, the decor that everybody had, you know, with making their, their thoughts known and everything. So, it was a packed, packed council. Yeah, yeah, tonight is the council meetings, how it's followed from the planning commission. They just have all changed what they're doing now, so, they're still formulating on that. Okay, um, my offer in secret has been issued to the Adams. So, uh, that's. Smart word, concern. Done, uh, with them, I'm not sure how they received. And um, there's still, um. Illegal issues with uh, with Corbett, or it's why, the conclusions are filed with him. And respond to meet some hearings after the first of the year on that. The city is continues to represent Corbett, sure, in the, in the process. So, now we, there was still an outstanding. Uh, they're playing, I mean, everything's been settled but one from the fuges against the city. And as of Corbett, the city's all, all been settled. I shouldn't say sit, well, settled in a sense that they've lost all the cases. The, the judges have found in favor of the city. So, they made a call, they made a statement, uh, a couple of months ago. In the last, um, last go around of, of legal motions against the city. That. That was the last one for the city and, and if they watch that. It'd be over with with the city, now, they'll also back home. That's the statement that they made in court, and, and then recognizing that the, the remaining thing they had was against. And those motions have been written, uh, to the court. Almost placed, so, see where that, that goes. If you want to go online, I learned of the subdivision ordinance and changes to it. It's SB, that's for Senate Bill one seventy-four. You can record that, it's all online. SB one seven four, what's seven?
Is it S period, D period, or just S?
SB. So, it's. SB one seventy-four has quite a few components, including an ADU component. But go down about two thirds of the way through it and you'll be the subdivision part. Then, it's, it's broken up that way, so subdivision part is part of that, but it's. It's, it's by itself, it's part of, part of this bill. Anything, any of you wanna talk about or have questions or? Anything? Can we talk about the condition of this? Yes, let me mention that too. This is a condition that's a. An extension, I guess, best way of putting it, for Summer Creek. They're using uh, a converted container from their sales office down there, next to their post office. And this continues that, it's a re, re. Yeah, so that, that what this is, it's just the same as they did submitted before. Uh, conditional use for that building.
Well, and it's, it's kind of behind their building there, so it's not.
Well, and it looks. Yeah, it was a container. That's what that is, that's been out there, so we'll review that, uh.
One other thing from the whole builders association that will probably be coming down. Is because of the houses, uh, off the point of the mount that slid into the ravine there. Uh, there is now, um. Liabilities in, in building for developers. And it's going to be called new sensitive lands ordinances. That every city will have to have developed because of that, and it has to do with geologic hazard ordinances. You have to, it's, it's, I think a five step process, the engineers have to. Do not only do all of their, their, but the, the follow up. You actually have to let the inspectors look at what the builders are doing to see if they're doing what the. The engineers recommend, the key tabs on it, and they said it's, it's going to increase.
They're gonna have a special inspector then, something like the city inspector.
I think so. I think that, well, that's, that has been planned.
There's official, specializing in that.
And that's nice, it's, it's interesting, the, the fellow that. Was at this meeting and brought the information to us. Said that the main reason that they did that was because as they built a road with properties against. They figured they could get four or six more lots on the other side of the road by doing all this fill stuff. Which would cut the, or save them the cost of the road, they've now determined. That uh, the two million dollars that they may have made by the extra buildings and saved has now cost them ten million dollars.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and, and so they're highly recommending, if you're going to build a. We couldn't kill the slows, so you'd be careful about the downsides.
Now, let me share with you a little.
We do, we do have a thing that has.
We do, we have a, a study that was done by a, a geological engineer firm.
Right.
And uh, they've identified the areas around the city where there are potential hazards. From earthquake to avalanche to, to uh. Yeah, it, it, any kind of hazard, and. When we, when we first passed our ordinance, we required every lot to have. Uh, hazard study, and we've since changed that.
Right.
Because, I mean, it costs thirty, four thousand dollars for that. So now, we use this map, and if the lot is in that map area showing that there's a hazard there. Then, they have to prevent, present plans to the city of how they can mitigate. That hazards when built on that lot. So, I think, or maybe you want to, you know, but it's only, only gonna get. More scrutiny and everything as time passes with, with those kinds of things. Um. It's kept a couple of, you know, from building, because I haven't, I haven't spent the money to, to mitigate.
Well, it was interesting on these homes that slid and the other ones that were condemned. Was that it was not really, the, the. The lots that they had compacted and built and did everything with was, was engineering, ingeniously viable. But they hadn't taken into account groundwater. And didn't push things down, it pushed them laterally, which then shifted everything, that's what caused it.
Wasn't feel necessary in that.
Right, well, and, and the fill, but what they had done was. I, I'm not sure how different fills are combined to make them stronger or less. But anyway, they, they had assured or ensured that the fill would not be water sensitive. And, and that's what caused the problem.
I mean, the kind of fill that you're.
But there's your, where it was accurate.
Yeah.
Or it's accurate, but.
And, and, well, it was accurate, but didn't take into account the lateral situation from, from water saturation. Took care of water saturation going downwards, but when it moved laterally because of the fill. Compos, it caused the problem. Very interesting.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that, uh, shout out there, it's good to, it's good to know, and I have uh, others. And they built one down in, uh, northern St. George, not Hurricane, but Washington, Washington. That, it, it collapsed, they was, they, they were close to, but had. And uh, they had some heavy storms down there, and it collapsed, they're looking at the developer.
Well, historically, I don't know, St. George or Islands or one of those areas close to the Virgin River, I think. Ten, twelve years ago, there was several homes.
Flash flood coming out of signs anywhere?
Bloomington, yeah.
It was across the street from, actually a lot, I don't. It was my brother a lot, or like. Anyhow, it's, it's a better, you know.
Two year old lot.
Not being there.
Yeah, well. They, they're both wires, the others, like fire, it can be a blessing or a challenge.
Yeah, yeah, St. George has expandable soils and, and.
Yeah, uh, cause as expandables, it was the airport problem.
Yeah, that's bad.
See, we, yeah, cause even that has a lot of collapse. But that expandable, I do play. Cause the, the collapses, kind of the canicia clay or panels, but this expandable, this boost stuff's actually really nasty.
Puts up really good.
And that's a show, the land paving, though, they'll actually. All, most of the buildings down there put up piers.
Yeah.
And then they're, they're, so they, and then they put. Um, cardboard or some sort of film material between slab and they put slabs around those tension. And so that deteriorates, and then slabs are just in midair. So the soil's come open to that, that release. And the landscaping will change by about that much and.
Really? Uh, seasonal?
They don't water it, so by the end of the day, it shrinks down, and then you'll water it and puff back.
Really?
Yeah, it's crazy.
Uh, any, any thoughts or comments or questions? I wanted to kind of review with you when we might have our December meeting. I wanted to kind of review with you when we might have our December meeting. Not opposed to moving it up in light of the holidays. Third Wednesday is the twentieth. That's, you know, so I just assume. Move it, move it up if everybody. Is agreeable to that. I wanna get your thoughts on it. You're gone? Well, first, if we if we keep Wednesday, the first is the sixth. That's a birthday Wednesday. The second Wednesday is the thirteenth. And then of course, third one is the twentieth.
I don't, I can do the sixth. I won't be able to do the next two. I've got I've got some house to get married. It's coming here and.
I think the sixth would look for me.
I think primarily what it's going to be is. Amendments to the to the ordinance, so I should go go pretty quick too. Should we say the sixth then?
Severin is out of town or just had?
No, he's around somewhere, but he had a. He said, I can make it if I need to be there, but it might don't. So it was kind of. Squeaky a little bit, so he's around. He has some. It's gonna Ted's gonna have his hands full for a while and getting oriented with everything that. Corbett was doing and how that fits into everything, but I I think it I think it'll be good. He's so far. Good positive compliments. Ted is uh gonna work with.
Well, he's well trained. He's knowledgeable and experienced.
I just hope we don't chase him out of the city.
Well, you tell Jones to build. And if this doesn't work out, I wouldn't mind to the back here. So it's 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 kind of a big loss for them, but Ted shared that uh they're excited for it. They said, we're we're happy when our when our people can get in the communities, you know.
It's a plus for them. I mean, it's a loss, but it's also.
Yeah, it is, but they were, they they said that's, you know, they're very community oriented. That's so they were flagged and. You know, that's where he was headed. Put his powers to use when the city and things and most of them still you chose a minute. For our city engineers and but we'll have in-house now too, so that'll that should help a lot. We haven't seen recently still no increase in building permits. We haven't had a government conference in a couple of months.
Well, they talked about that with the new building too. Uh building permits are down anywhere from. Well, Woodland Hills down just a few, but a lot of new builders are down fifty percent from last year. New building permits. A part of that is a lot of people tried to get building permits. Before some changes were going on, even though they weren't going to. But like Basin down sixteen percent, Springville eighteen percent, Spanish fourth twenty six percent. Mapleton eighteen percent. Uh the only. One that is is increasing is Highland is up seventy percent.
Oh, wow, really? All the rest are right down. The interest rate has a lot to do. Yeah, it's made comments about that.
On some of the loans they were doing, there's a little. They were pretty much pushing through. If you got a stimulus check, they were pushing you through no matter what.
Oh, really? Let's talk to uh a couple of realtors and they're finding situations now where people, it's like they're, you know, call points, but that's. What they're doing to pay their interest rate.
He is twenty thousand dollars.
They they they're picking the points and buying down. Well, very good. There's nothing more. I'll take a motion to adjourn. I salute. Very good. Okay, thank you for coming. Have a good rest of the week.